Good evening, everybody. Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Advair Park Press on July 1, 2022, and had been duly advertised in the Advair Park Press issue of July 7, 2022. While most of the clerks of the town troops and the boroughs within the regional district have been duly notified and the requirements have been met on July 1, 2022. Please join me in standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Toscano, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda that was preprinted prior to going into executive session, we're adding additional items. Under exception number one, we're discussing student discipline matters. And under exception number seven, we're discussing the matter under docket number L 2968-20.
Is that all?
Yes, that's all.
Now I have a motion to approve the date to July 14, 2022.
Moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Proceed, Mr. Ross.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please. Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Just a reminder, the communications are filed in the business office. We're going to start our reports. We're going to start with Dr. Sampson's superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Good evening, everyone. So obviously, the start of the school year is upon us. A lot of terrific things happening over the past week or so. All of our freshman orientations, our ninth grade kickoffs. Our new student orientations are alive and hopping across the district. So there's a lot of real positive energy there, getting ready for the 22, 23 school year. From our end, we had our leadership retreat yesterday. One of the things we've done for the past 12 years, 12 summers now, is select a book to share and sort of guide the retreat process. This year, it was a book by the Heath Brothers called "About Moments and Creating Moments", and it really dovetails nicely with some of the work that needs to happen this school year. Some really good things that came out of our student survey at the end of the year and some things that we know we need to focus on as it ties into creating moments for students. As we issued a... Every year, we do a student engagement survey across the district. And one of the noteworthy things that stood out from last year to the year prior was that the number of students that felt connected to a particular adult in the building grew, but in multiple categories. A lot of students expressed doubt and a lack of self-confidence in some of their own abilities to do things. And that took a hit from COVID. We can see that in the way that the students responded. And the book that we read was all about how you can actually create moments for folks in real time that have lasting impacts and the power of these individual moments. So it was a good kickoff to the year for the leadership team. And it's good to get everybody together in one place over Colts Neck and just come together at the end of the summer. Typically, this week, I would have done my walkthrough of all six high schools, Mr. Boyce and Mr. LeGravenus. And I always look forward to that day, not just to see the work that occurred throughout the summer, but to thank the Buildings and Grounds Department for all the work that they did. And I didn't get that opportunity this year. My hamstring had other ideas. But it's a wonderful opportunity to actually physically walk the building and thank all the individuals who spent all summer shining the floors, putting the fresh coat of paint on, fixing a million little issues across the buildings. And so Mr. Boyce and Mr. Lavin, the Gravenus, have pushed that back to next week, and hopefully we can get out and about. Our new staff orientation is scheduled for next Wednesday here, actually. So we'll have all our new faculty and staff here, an opportunity to address them myself. I'll open that up in Dr. Sharp's office, and Dr. Hazel will open that up following my bit. And then we're right to complication. We're going to do one more year of not pulling the whole district together. We're going to do a building-based address. I'll make one address for all the faculty and staff. But there's nothing like, there's no substitute for bringing the whole district together and actually seeing that collective capacity in one place. And the energy that that usually helps us kind of kick the year off is something I'll miss this year, but just an overabundance of caution, we'll keep it to the buildings. Good news from CUSAC, right? The state, otherwise known as the Quality Single Accountability Continuum. The state loves to give these very easy terms for us. But that's basically, in a nutshell, how school districts are evaluated every three years from the New Jersey Department of Ed. It's five different categories. Anything 80 and above is high performing. We're high performing in all five categories. And the only thing that we're not 100% in is under instruction program. And frankly, the reason we're not, these are 2018, 19 data that they rely on to do this. It's about student participation in assessments, more so than performance. We've challenged the state on multiple occasions about how our students demonstrate their mastery of subject matter material and what that looks like, and their proficiency to graduate. And we've used a lot of our SAT scores and such. An AP student, the state doesn't want to hear it. It is a backhanded way to drive compliance. And if you don't have that 80, you're not high performing. And so it's a way to sort of pigeonhole districts into making sure that every student is sitting for assessments as a high school-only district. It gets a little funky for us because kids have met their graduation requirements oftentimes through other ways. So regardless, still high performing in that area and across the board. But your folks know I can't help but dig at the standardized assessment from the state. Referendum update. Mr. Bruno and I spoke, and he said a couple of members of the public stopped him and asked me about the paving and how high school and saying, "Well, how are you paying for the referendum?" You know, we sent down a couple of updates to the community about that work, but it's gone very well across the summer overall. Remember, that referendum is paying for the roofing and paving priority one projects across the six high schools. This year, there's four paving projects underway and two roof projects. And then next year will be two paving projects and four roofing projects. And that's how the work has been divided over the two years. For this summer, the paving in Colts Neck, Howe, Frillborough are done. Menalapins will be finished on Monday. The roofing work at Freehold Township is almost complete. We were a little bit worried about that as we opened school, but that looks like we're going to come in under time for that. At Marlborough High School, there's been a delay in materials, and we've been aware of this for months at this point in time. So we're really seeing what it looks like. We have another job meeting on September 14, and we'll finalize a plan of action for that roofing work to occur throughout the school year. But it's obviously much more difficult to do it during the school year if you're going to swap classes and you have to do it piecemeal, and we're going to get it done. It's a global supply chain issue, is what it comes down to with the roofing materials there for Marlborough. All told, very positive progress with the referendum. We've replaced about 100 exterior doors that were deemed in need of replacement at this point in time throughout the summer as well. So we feel real good about the work that was done. We have a number of, our teacher coaches are offering a number of classes for our faculty and staff and our new faculty over the summer and drop-in periods. Things like setting up your gradebook, utilizing Google Classroom, tools like that. We've front-loaded as much of the onboarding process and as much of the nitty-gritty work that needs to be done in order to hit the ground running come the first day of classes for students as we possibly can. And I feel very good about where we are there as a district, and we're ready to go. There we go, this school year. That's all right.
Thank you very much. We have some board reports tonight. And first up is a meeting, Mr. Messinger from Marlborough. He's going to give the report on finance, because we do not have curriculum and instructions. So, Mr. Messinger?
Okay.
All yours.
Thanks, and I apologize. I'm going to repeat a little bit of what Dr. Sampson said, but I'm going to go in more depth since we did have quite an extensive meeting last week. With respect to the referendum that Dr. Sampson had mentioned, Dr. Sampson had explained about the delays in roofing. So we had a detailed discussion about labor issues surrounding the installation of the roofs and the administration and had a meeting with the contractor to get them to pick up the pace. And the contractor ended up putting more workers on the roof. So we did get, we went from a little bit behind schedule to being ahead of schedule, and the progress on these roofs really picked up over the past four to five weeks. So overall, we're in good shape after that meeting happened. And that meeting was also held with our architects in addition to the administration. And just with respect to the delays, I had mentioned last meeting, and Dr. Sampson just mentioned now at Marlborough. We're looking to get materials to start by the end of August. I mean, I had explained last time about the insulation being an issue, but in addition to insulation, adhesives, and rubber are also in short supply, and this is what has transpired. So Dr. Sampson talked about the fact that obviously you can't be installing a roof while kids are in school due to the noise. Another concern that they have to watch out for is the smell of glue. There's a lot of glue used in roofing, and we certainly can't have the smell of glue lingering in classrooms. So that also impacts what kind of work can be done after hours once the kids are out of school. Basically, the work at Marlborough is going to be concentrated when there's a string of days off, Jewish holidays, teachers' convention. And then there'll be selective work at Marlborough being done on the weekend. Another complicating factor is the calendar rolls on, is that it has to be above 45 degrees for adhesives to dry. So that is another issue that is going to be occurring. Then we talked about paving. Obviously, Menalapin had a larger undertaking here due to the sinkhole. But as anyone who's come here tonight could physically observe the progress made, they've been basically working every single day here at Menalapin. With respect to the future, as Dr. Sampson said, the schools that have the paving are going to have the roofs done next year. And we're out for bidding now on those roofs. This board should be awarding contracts in late September for that. And then we talked about the timeframe with respect to awarding contracts for the paving at Marlborough and Freehold Township that hopefully will occur in 2023. And of course, the architect is working on the logistics of that in order to lessen the time between awarding, between sending out bids of when the work starts, because obviously we're in an inflationary time. So the cost component here of materials is something that we have to think about. With respect to security doors, there's actually 600 interior doors in this district. About 120 of the 600 are going to be replaced. And really, remember, there's a big safety component to this, because if there's an emergency going on, no one has to be fumbling around with keys to lock a door from the inside. So that's a big component of it. Then we had really, I would say, a state-of-the-future discussion with the director of Building and Grounds, Mr. LeGravenus. The Building and Grounds budget here is remain flat for many years. But as we have said, Dr. Sampson has said, for several years, we've had damage from state government funding cuts due to S2. And this is a big district. We have six high schools. The infrastructure needs are immense. And for the past eight to nine years, our staff, as Dr. Sampson said, has done a phenomenal job in implementing preventive maintenance. But with these schools, some of them, most of them, more than 50 years old, there are issues that are going to be developing in coming years. There's no emergency issues going on right now, but we are responsible for really looking out over the next three to 10 years. And it's just, there's just a lot of things that potentially could be occurring in future years. So we have to be on the lookout for that. So the Building and Grounds departments really having discussions looking toward the future, looking at projects, what's a must-do versus should-do. And with respect to S2 and the uncertainty there, we are set aside money for various projects such as generators, PA systems, climate control systems, chiller pipes. So at some point in time, budget cuts from the state government certainly could have an impact going in the future. Nothing for this board to decide now, but just setting the stage for what the future looks like. And we just discussed the Building and Grounds component of S2. Obviously, this is impacting other areas of the district. Building and Grounds is just one component of this district. Switching gears to transportation, we had discussions about the administrative setup, employment, prospects going forward. We discussed financial aspects of transportation, including sports. And as anyone who follows the news knows, the transportation costs are through the roof due to not only higher gas prices, but also the bus driver shortage. So we discussed these issues and how things are going to drive us out going forward. Finally, we received $2 million in stabilization aid from the state. Now, this is something where only losers from S2 budget cuts from the state were eligible. So that was some financial news. Tonight, we are approving a submission of an application for supplemental aid. But this is from a smaller pot of state money than the $2 million stabilization aid came from. And then to wrap it up, there was some good news. We did get $470,000 in aid from FEMA, and that's basically what transpired for the most part.
Thank you very much. Good job with that. A little warm one. Good job. Mr. Boyce, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. In addition to the addendum on the back table in this yellow paper, there's one other addition, and then there's also one amendment. But for the addition, Mr. Toscano, I think we're going to slide that in on J...
J 25.
J 25.
Motion for read, motion for board, my recognition superintendent to approve the settlement agreement for matter under 2022-005.
Thank you. So those are the additions to the agenda. One change to the agenda is under G13, under approval of advancements. If you could change for Lauren Fraser, change salary from BA, Step 7, $75,0052, to MA, Step 7, $80,0052, effective 9/1/22. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And I was teasing you. I gave you a little break from the policies, and I'm going to do policy right now. Give everybody a little break. We met on August 3, the Policy Committee, and we had some revisions and some changes to the policies. Most of these have to do with students. High school students, the first one, is high school students representatives to the Board of Education. Include a new law that requires school districts to have grades 9 through 12 to include a student to serve as a non-voting student, non-voting rep at our board meetings. So that'll be interesting, to have a student involved in our monthly meetings. The term quorum establishes the minimum number of board members that makes a quorum of the board to conduct official business and addresses when and how the doctrine and ethnicity can be invoked. The other change, the Board of Education website accessibility, requires school districts' websites to follow the grant content accessibility guidelines as required by the USD OE, Office of Civil Rights. So there'll be some changes in the district websites soon because of this policy. Every Student Success Act has been revised to reflect the updated Title I policy guides concerning parent and family engagement. Another policy on special ed has been revised to include case managers for students that are placed outside of the district placement by the board, will be monitored, the progress of those students, and will remain close communications regarding the implementation of the students' ID's. School sponsored publications will be abolished and replaced with a new policy, 5722, the student journalism outlining new statutes requiring school districts to adopt a written policy concerning the student's freedom of expression, including the process the school districts must follow when it is believed that student's expressions in the school-sponsored media was not protected. Another policy change, professional responsibility reflects current practice in education and requires the principal or his or her designee to review lesson plans and assign extra or alternative duties to the teaching staff. Another change on lesson plans reflect the best practices in education for lesson plans and outlines the content of the lesson plans for the district. Care of school property has been revised to address the school district's right to get reimbursed for damages lost or destroyed, school textbooks or technologies, devices. School district issued student identification cards has been revised to include requirements for students to have identification cards for grades 7 through 12 that includes their phone number on the New Jersey Prevention Hotline and the Crisis Text Line on all student ID cards. And the last one, student abuse has been revised to clarify the method through which staff members must notify the principal or he or her designee to believe a student is under any kind of influence or possession of drugs. And that's it. Now we're going to go into public participation. We have two speakers tonight. Taylor Douglas? Tyler Douglas? Sorry.
Greetings, Superintendent Sampson and Board of Education members. I ask that you all bear with me. I recently had oral surgery. My name is Tyler Douglas. I am vice president of Raise of Hope and attend school here in the district. I am 16 years old, and I come before you regarding Juneteenth. Did you miss me? I am proud that our district has made the necessary change to the calendar that reflects the equity work needed in this district. I want to thank you all for listening to us and considering what we have to say. I also want to personally thank Mr. Mendez. When he called me down to the office, he was supportive and encouraging. He even returned my call yesterday after I left a message to the superintendent. I thank him for his support throughout this process. As soon as I found out that we were getting Juneteenth Day off to spend with family and friends, a smile instantly took over my face. My Raise of Hope members and I have worked for this, and I am so proud of us. Again, Superintendent Sampson and the board, thank you for listening to us. I am committed to leaving a legacy of meaningful equity and diversity work. I look forward to many more conversations around diversity, inclusion, equity, or the lack of in this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker tonight, Jayla George.
Good evening, all. My name is Jayla, and I stand here tonight as a proud member and president of Raise of Hope and a student here at Menalapin High School. I must say that when we started this campaign to get Juneteenth recognized as a school holiday, it was not just about adding a day off to the school calendar, but about advocating and for acknowledgement of Black history and representation of African-American students in this district. Tonight, I stand here hopeful as a result of this vote. This is historic, monumental, and impactful for our upcoming. You have stood up and, as they say, talked the talk, but more importantly, walked the walk. You have demonstrated that you recognize the importance of Black history. You support equity and are willing to take the necessary actions to support African-American students in your district. My hope that this work will not be limited to acknowledging Juneteenth as a school holiday, but that the schools will post activities and programs that students and faculty can participate in during the celebration of Juneteenth. So I say thank you to this board and keep doing your work.
And I say thank you to the board again. Very good, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to have a motion to take G1 through G19. This is Personnel and Negotiations, G1 through G19. I need a motion. Mr. Lavin?
Second for Parisi.
Mr. Parisi, second. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please. Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Under Programmed Operations, Building and Transportation and Physical Plan, may I have a motion to take H1 through I5? Mrs. Lavin?
Second.
Mr. Parisi? Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Kind of a motion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Under Educational Program and Administration, I have a motion to take J1 through K6.
Motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Lavin. I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Parisi? Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Are there any members wishing to discuss all business?
I have a question, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, as far as the exterior doors, I think you said they were replaced, they're not, they haven't been replaced yet? How many doors you had said?
Well, so the scope of the original.
I did.
Yeah, Shulker addressed that, Mr. Voice can address that for you.
Yeah, so the, the scope of the original grant for, this is a security, a security grant, state grant, um, was the door locks, right? That was our priority. And in doing that work, some of the interior doors were in need of replacement. So we were able to fit that within the amount of funds allocated. In addition to that, we were also able to replace some exterior doors that, that were in need of it and, and, you know, undertone, just select doors. So those doors, they'll, they're, they're secure at, at, right now. Those will be on order, they'll arrive when they arrive, and will be replaced when they arrive. So, no, the work has not been done for the exterior.
For the exterior, okay.
Thank you. Any new business?
Yeah, so I want to welcome Brittany Whiteout. Brittany, stand up. So Brittany is a Freehold Township High School graduate, a longtime English teacher over at Howe High School. And tonight she was named the academic supervisor for English and Social Studies over at Freehold Township High School, so she's going home. Just wanted to congratulate Brittany on her new board. And then the last piece, Mr. Bruno, just, it wasn't even part of our report, but we had, we had talked about it a little bit, you know. As, as the school year approaches, probably the biggest point of consternation for us is busing and transportation. And, you know, I would ask that, like, at the start of all school years, but it's only exacerbated with the, the shortages we're facing, not just in real regional, but across the state and obviously across the country. We're gonna do the very best that we can. And, you know, folks are gonna, especially over those first couple of days of school, we need to just hopefully be patient and understand. I use the example of my own children outside their bus stop. Their, their first day of school was today and according to my wife, pickup was usually six fifty-five. Her pickup today was seven thirty-five, because that was interesting. So it's, it's, it's happening everywhere, but we're out in front of it as much as we possibly can be and working, Mr. Voice's office and Transportation Department are working very diligently to make sure that we open as smoothly as possible as it is transportation.
Definitely need bus drivers, so do you know anybody?
Yes, I see a great one.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Could I, I have a question for Dr. Sampson with respect to new business. So last night, I was at the freshman orientation in Marlboro. So there was that section of the program that talked about the one-to-one, that every student gets a Chromebook and they, um, when somebody was asked about textbooks, um, so it was brought up how everything's on Google Classroom and that was part of the reason why you had, you can't bring your own laptop into school. Or you could, but you can't use it. So they were talking about Google Classroom and I was wondering, do you think at one of our meetings, we could have a presentation up on a screen and just have, I don't know, a dummy class, an agenda up there, what it actually looks like to the student in today's day and age when you use Google Classroom? Like, it was talked about how the assignments, you know, it's not like in middle school where the teacher gets everything together for you, engineer makeup work if you miss school. And I just wanted to know if we could see for ourselves what the student is seeing on Google Classroom.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea, Mr. Messinger would, we're gonna give you your own Google Classroom. But then, yeah, that, that's, that's an easy thing to do. And, and, you know, the, the, the structure of how students interface with their teachers and, you know, it predates COVID, but it was exacerbated, obviously, by, by being remote. You know, just there's, there's, there's an awful lot of information that's out there contained within their Google Classroom. That's sort of where, you know, the, the, most of the heartbeat of the, the force is, is contained. So, yeah, yeah, I'll look at something together for the board.
Thanks.
Thank you. Not hearing any new, any more new business. We're gonna adjourn for the night. I might have a motion to adjourn the meeting for a minute. Mr. Moses, like that. May I have a second?
I'm busy.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lavin? All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.